I think we're close enough to nine o'clock. That clock's a little fast. Clock here says we're there. So I'll open this meeting. And we'll start with the pledge allegiance and then a prayer. I don't see the pastor here. Must have had a problem. So I will ask the Lord to be with us today to guide us, give us the wisdom to do what needs to be done for the betterment of the people of Reno County. First thing on the agenda, I'd like to welcome anybody that's here and glad you made it. We will go on from there with item four on our agenda. Public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that has a statement to make or wants to talk about anything? Seeing none. I think item five will need to determine if there needs to be any changes to the agenda. Does anybody have anything that they want to make an addition or a change to the agenda? Okay, see, see nothing there. Item six, the consent agenda. There was no move to move anything. Is there any particular item you want to speak about before we entertain a motion? Seeing none, then we will, I'll entertain a motion to accept this consent agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
No, second.
Motion and second. So any discussion before we vote. Seeing and hearing none. Autumn, would you help us out here?
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Commissioner Vincent?
Commissioner Vincent won't be here today.
Commissioner Winger?
Yes.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Commissioner Bogner?
And the next thing on our agenda would be the business items. And the first item on our business items is seven A solid waste annual report. Megan, please.
Good morning.
Morning, morning.
Well, it's been a busy previous year, busy start to this year. I just kind of wanted to briefly go over with you some things that we've accomplished and what we have done out at the landfill. We've been working, of course, still gun range is almost complete on our end. We have one more berm that we have to excavate some of the dirt out, but they did work on their site pad for their new building coming up. I'm sure Sheriff will talk about that later, but that has been completed for them. And we've also started, if you haven't been out there recently, we've torn down the old scale house building that was there before and all of the buildings that were around it to get ready for our next landfill cell, which will be cell number nine. So we're starting all of the dirt excavation as we do all of our own dirt excavation for our cells out there that saves the county four to five, $600,000. So we are starting that process now as we get ready for the next cell, which will be in the next couple, couple of years here. We have our construction demolition site. We are in phase two currently where we place all the waste for construction demolition. We just finished phase three and we'll be able to here soon be able to place waste in that cell. We do have still plenty of life left in C and D. We just do things in phases and plans and stages throughout. On our spring cleanups, I'm sure you're aware of City of Hutch has a spring cleanup every year. They just did one a couple of weeks ago and the weather wasn't very favorable for it, but I did, you know, we did receive quite a bit of loads that came in on the Hutch spring cleanup around the city of Hutch. And then we also have all of our city, smaller cities and communities around Reno County, they have some cleanups as well. Haven, Beulah, we have our household hazardous waste trailer that gets sent out to those different communities so that way citizens in those rural communities can dispose of household hazardous waste items like paint, stains, chemicals, anything that is in your household that's considered a hazard, it can be recycled so it doesn't have to go into the landfill. I gave you guys some numbers on our household hazardous waste update report. You know, we used to spend up in the $75,000, $80,000 range to recycle household hazardous waste material every year. And since we have our reuse facility out at the landfill, if you live in Reno County, you are more than welcome to come out and get free for no charge. Paint, stains, long chemicals, pool chemicals, there's anything you can think of that is in its original container, we can replace back into the reuse facility and we can make that open to the public to be able to come out and get it for free. With that being said, on our household hazardous waste program, as you probably have heard yesterday, we had a landfill fire. It was not a huge landfill fire. It was, it was manageable. We got called out about 3:00 AM yesterday morning, so we were there at 3:00 AM and the firefighters actually left. They are just more of a standby for us. We do appreciate their assistance and everything that they do. Their brush trucks help once we get trash cut out of the lift. That, you know, spraying water on a trash fire is not the way to put out the fire. So we take our bulldozers and we cut things out, we cut the trash out and put them in windrows and then we put dirt on top and then they can come in and they can put water on it. But they were done before the sun came up. We were, the fire was out way before 7:00 AM and we were taking trash at 8:00 AM. So the fire is not burning. Everything is under control. But with that being said, we do not know what causes these fires, but one thing that can cause fires in landfills is anything with a lithium battery in it. So a laptop battery, cellphone battery, the little power wheels cars that your grandkids or kids will, you know, get, make sure those get taken out. We take a lot of those out before people throw them away. Those can explode and they can cause landfill fires. Anything you think that when you throw things away, it's a chemistry project and things can explode and unfortunately they do cause landfill fires. So we will take any of those materials, lithium batteries, any kind of battery, lead acid batteries, we recycle all those batteries. So those can be brought out to the Reno County landfill at our household hazardous waste facility, but just right next to the scale. So for public to know that. The numbers on our HHW, we recycled, we replaced over 24 tons, 48,000 pounds of material was placed in our reuse building last year and available to the public. We recycled almost 5,900 gallons of used oil. About 15 tons of batteries were picked up for recycling, including lithium batteries was included in that. About 602 tons of metal was picked up for recycling in 2024. That keeps things out of landfill and it also is a revenue for Reno County itself. And then our mattress recycling is a program we have. We work with Hutchinson Correctional Facility and that program, they recycle all the wood that comes out of mattresses and springs and they build furniture and dog houses and that type of material that can be sold to the public. So a little bit of data from our trash side of things on the municipal solid waste for all material, and this includes anything from construction demolition and then all of our trash municipal solid waste is what MSW stands for. Reno County brought in 101,219 tons of trash and our out of counties was right at about 39,000 last year. Pretty similar numbers to the year before. We haven't really changed on our numbers on tonnages. Compost, we reuse our compost on site to help with our slopes and our erosion control with KDHE to keep big erosion spots to come up. We had over 2,200 tons of compost in our brush. We burned about 13,692 tons of brush last year. So that's a lot of brush that comes in that we have to get rid of. So staffing, we actually use and utilize temporary employment for our litter pickers. That is one of the biggest things that KDHE looks at when they come out on site and they see blowing litter out of the fences that could be a violation for us. And then we are very fortunate to have very good temporary employees that work for us. So we hire anywhere from one to five people, sometimes more when we have good old Kansas 40, 50 mile an hour winds. So we do hire those to help with our litter picking and we are at 23 full-time employees is what we have out there today. This past year, I've given quite a few tours of the landfill, a lot of after-school programs like Boys and Girls Club, they've came out and we had some fourth and fifth graders a couple of weeks ago that learned they were doing some projects on recycling and landfill and where, what happens with everything once it comes to the landfill. So they came out and we did a tour with the Boys and Girls Club. I've worked with a group in Reno County of Earth Matters. They have done a couple tours out there as well with us and learned about the landfill and recycling. And then a couple of major construction projects we've had in the past year, of course, atrium hotel demolition came into us. A lot of that concrete did not come to us fortunately, it went elsewhere, but we did accept that the municipal solid waste was about 235 tons. And the mixed demo that came from that, which would have been trash and demolition mixed, it brought in about 262, but the C and D itself that was separate was about 2,100 tons that was brought in. So we did make a little bit of revenue off of our C and D projects, off of those big hotel, big projects that come in where we wouldn't have gotten revenue before. It kind of offsets that user fee that we have for solid waste. And then also the St. Elizabeth Hospital project with Interfaith Housing Project, that also came in last year and they brought in about a total of 9,000 tons and we did take about 8,500 tons of concrete from that project. So in the future, I will be looking at hiring a concrete crusher again to come out and crush a bunch of concrete so we can reuse those, that material on our roads out at the landfill. And then I would like to mention on lithium battery drop-off locations besides the landfill, I know that Home Depot, Harbor Freight in town, and Lowe's all will accept lithium batteries as well for, for drop-off locations. I know there was a lot of talk about where they could take things like that too. So I thought it might be a good idea while I'm up here to talk about that as well. And that's really all I have. Project wise, we've got a lot of things happening this year, but we're working on, like I said, cell construction is our next biggest, you'll see the biggest change out there when you come out to the landfill, see us working. So any questions?
Seeing none.
Okay.
Must have covered it pretty well, Megan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda would be the sheriff's annual report.
Good morning. I brought in a couple of items I'm going to talk about. Cap Lutz is going to bring up here and they'll be here when it's over. So if you guys want to check them out or whatever, that's fine. My update, it's hard to describe what everything, that the guys do all day, every day, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, from wrestling a guy with a gun to cutting down an inmate, trying to self-harm. There's just stuff that's always happening. So I'm going to try and summarize this and I appreciate the, working with me, my annual update's usually in April. So all the numbers and everything I'm talking about would be from April 2024 to the end of March 2025, a rolling calendar year. So the Reno County Sheriff's Office mission is to ensure the highest level of public safety while protecting the rights and dignity of those we serve through community partnerships and unbiased enforcement of the law. The Reno County Sheriff's Office is staffed at 101 personnel. We have 85 full-time deputies, 12 civilian support staff, and four part-time offender registration personnel. The administration of the sheriff's office consists of the under sheriff Sean McHale, captain of the detective division, Sean McClay, captain of the patrol division, Steve Lutz, and the captain of the jail division, Levi Blumenhurst. Captains, lieutenants, and sergeants and corporals are all responsible for setting and maintaining high quality and standards of discipline while conducting daily operations and making intent-driven decisions. These deputies also serve as standard bearers and role models via vital training, educating and developing subordinates. Through training, coaching, mentoring, equipping, and informal interaction, they guide the development of deputies on an everyday basis and play a role in their development. The sheriff is responsible by statute for maintaining a county jail, civil process, offender registration, concealed carry processing, along with preserving the peace, just to name a few. The Reno County Correctional Facility is a 250-bed facility, which is ran by a detail of eight deputies supervised by a sergeant 24 hours a day. The population of the facility this morning is set at 205 people that are incarcerated here in Reno County. This is an increase quite a bit in the past month or so. The number that being that high tends to be a problem. From April of last year to March of this year, there were a total of 1,953 people that was booked into the Reno County Correctional Facility. The highest throughout the year, the numbers were up to 214 at one point and the lowest was at 157 that were housed out there. Daily deputies working in the jail deal with drunk, high, and mentally unstable people whom they're required to process. When I say process, that means that each person coming into the facility, all 1,953 of them, they get booked in on the appropriate charges, they're fingerprinted, photographed, and other in-processing protocols based on whether a person is going to be bonding out or they'll be going down the population, along with dealing with incoming arrests. There are usually several events that are going on in the facility, whether they're passing linen, hygiene, canteen being distributed, meals being served, medications being passed. Along with these duties are approximately 11 different programs, which we have in full swing to assist inmates that are housed in the facility for any length of time. In between there, we have court processes that are going on, whether it's video court or they come over here for court. There's also multiple facilities throughout the state that inmates are brought back to court, which are housed into in our facility. With the programs, I believe some of the numbers would be over 90 GEDs have been issued throughout the lifetime of our facility, which we've been open for about a little over 10 years. So that's, that's pretty good. In the past 12 months, Reno County Correctional Facilities have made some large steps toward modernization and improving staffing. Again, since March of last year and April this year, we had 161 people that were, that applied to be Reno County Sheriff Deputy. 85 of those failed the initial background check. 75 of those were tested, 59 passed, another 59, 37 were interviewed. 28 moved on to the background investigation and we actually hired 17 of the 28. 16 of the 17 are still employed with us today. We currently have a waiting list of possible employees which have completed the entire process. They're just waiting to see if a position will come open. We are still needing one RN to fill the vacant jail medical section. However, we are full staffed other than the nurse and one part-time offender registration clerk. We've added six vital monitoring devices and cells which can detect when an inmate is in respiratory or cardiac arrest. This was slow to install and complete, but the potential to save lives based on our use of the device has improved greatly. These were purchased and the actual subscription for the next five years were paid for off a grant which we applied for. The dishwasher in the kitchen facility was an aging machine that was constantly breaking down and needing repair. A new one was purchased and installed. This was also purchased by a grant through KDHE in the state to pay for that. The commercial washer and dryer in the facility were heavily used and in need of replacement. The replacements puts us into modern machines with a warranty to keep them running. Those were also purchased with a grant through KDHE. The facility wifi was, was in need and was always an issue due to thick walls and all the concrete. While passing medications, the medical software was essential in the documentation and making medication pass. Inmate services, programs, maintenance, and staffing much easier. The upgrade through the facility was also paid for by a grant. We've added a full body scanner, which was purchased with a grant from Senator Moran's office in late 2024. This machine has already deterred contraband from entering our facility that our old processes would likely not have caught. Our jail staff and inmates and personnel working in the facility are now safer in there due to it's being used. Currently, when you talk about mental health and restoration for courts, we do have a clinician that has an office out there, jail that has kept that going and we don't have anybody on the waitlist for longer competency restoration at this time. The patrol division, it consists of civil process, courthouse, security, reserves, cadets, and of course, the patrol. Special units would consist of special response team, honor guard, drone team, town liaison, K-9, and senior patrol. For a deputy to be able to patrol by themselves, they must first attend a 14-week class of training and getting certified through the state through the Kansas Law Enforcement Training Center, which upon graduation, they go through two weeks of in-service training over policies and protocols by various agency instructors. Then the deputies go through another 14 weeks of field training. During these 14 weeks, they progress from being told every move they make by their training officer and being observed and evaluated to conducting business on their own and handling calls. They're monitored closely and daily observation reports are made every day to discuss positive actions and negative interactions and how they can get better. The training is evaluated by a field training director and the patrol captain. Remedial training may be necessary and if the rookie is not meeting standards, they may go back to operating in the jail or be terminated. This is essential in the progression of a deputy because they'll be miles and miles away from anybody when they need to make a decision or handle a situation and dealing with the public. The county actually consists of 1,257 square miles, which is broken down into three beats. Each beat is, has a patrol deputy assigned to respond to calls for service within their beat. There can be a traffic unit available to respond to motor vehicle accidents, cattle and road wear, any to other type of call or call for service. Typically, there's a supervisor which will respond to specific calls for backup and provide guidance and direction on how a deputy responds, investigates, and improves paperwork to be sent for further investigation or prosecution, just to name a few. The case reports which are made will be sent to the detective division to determine if further investigation is necessary. During the year 2024 through April to March, there were a total of 16,993 calls for service that were either dispatched to or officer initiated. 300, I'm sorry, 3,826 of those were traffic stops that were initiated by deputies. In April 2024, we had five patrol openings, a K-9, and four regular positions that were open. As of this day, we have one patrol opening that we're being very selective in. We've been lucky that two deputies that we put on patrol prior, their prior employer, they decided not to work for and they wanted to come back and work for us, so they went right back in out on their street where they left. As far, as far as our K-9 program, we have, we have selected a deputy to fill that spot and we have him training with other departments to better develop the program for Reno County than what we've had in the past. The other agencies have been working with and talking to are Cedric County, KHP, and some of the Hudson Police Department. Because this is a long process and we do not want to rush program, the K-9 deputy is, has been working on regular patrol duties most of the time. We've also transitioned one of our experienced patrol deputies to a position with the Criminal Interdiction Unit to give them more assistance. In the area of equipment, we purchased two additional items, which for each patrol unit. Each patrol unit has a rifle rated ballistic shield in it for any active shooter situation or other situation where the deputy feels they need protection in carrying out those duties. In purchasing these new ones, it's freed up a couple to make it available for our detective division. The next item is a halogen tool for each deputy free patrol unit. This is a large pry tool that's used mostly by fire departments, used to entry in the buildings and any other time a large pry bar is needed. We found that on several occasions, we've been needing that extra help in opening a door, building to, or a vehicle and a multitude of the other uses. In the past, we've had to call fire out to assist us in these situations, which may take up precious time. Last year, we purchased five new patrol SUVs. This was part of our rotation of patrol vehicles. We were not able to get these vehicles to the last quarter of 2024. These SUVs are the 2025 models and still need to be outfitted with law enforcement equipment. In the past, this was all done by County Automotive Shop. However, the retirement of the director in Automotive was less one technician and our outfitting took a back burner. To this day, there still needs to be two vehicles which need to be outfitted. While talking about rotation of the vehicles, I want to, I want to point out that when I was a, when I was a patrol captain, I came in and we had a gray program. We would typically purchase four SUVs and a pickup along with two, one or two admin cars every year. That kept us under the warranty so that there was anything that popped up on those vehicles, driven like a patrol deputy is going to drive those vehicles, it would be covered by under warranty and it would help curb some of the maintenance procedures that are done and less strain on our, on our employees. However, there was a commissioner, previous commissioner that wanted us to go to a five-year rotation. I don't know, we went, tried to do the five-year, that has actually expanded into, I don't know if it's a six or seven year. I think we have patrol vehicles now that have almost 200,000 miles on them and I never seen a vehicle on patrol that has had that many miles in the 31 years I've been here. Two of the vehicles that we have scheduled to take off the road were in the process of changing and had major, major repairs. One has had to have a thousand dollars in repairs to keep it going and another became totally disabled in a deputy's driveway in the middle of a shift. That one is beyond cost-effective repair. In this current year, we were budgeted to replace one SUV and one truck. That extends the time a little bit further past the five-year rotation. It appears that we have moved into a seven or eight-year rotation on patrol vehicles. And with that in mind, given the current quality of vehicles, there are not be much to sell trade or value that we can get rid of and keep up our special equipment fund on the backside. The current relationship with the Hudson Police Department and us, having a combined SWAT team is working out well. We have deployed together on several callouts and in normal fashion, when we work together to get things done, we all work professionally and obtain a safe and successful resolution. The civil process section, as usual, has been very busy. They average approximately 650 papers a month and this does not include the revisits of people that are not home during certain papers and have to be personally served. And the Lincoln Conference. And the linky conversation with citizens that often engage them in trying to learn what, what to do with the papers. Uh, these deputies perform around fifteen evictions a month. That usually takes up one civilian process server and two uniform deputies to get this done effectively and safely. Uh, one of the newest deputies performing in the civil process section, uh, is, I'm sorry, one of the new duties, uh, the civil process section is, has started, uh, I believe April of last year, is the VIN inspections. We've, uh, sent some people to some classes and we've started that process. Uh, KHP only does it at the fairgrounds. They have one person that does it only on specific hours and days of the week. Uh, we have now opened that up to the public as far as, uh, every day of the week in the mornings, I believe from eight to ten in the mornings. And, and they perform on an average about eighty vehicle inspections a month now. Uh, at the first of the year, the courthouse security was taken over fully by the sheriff's office, and it consists of two deputies, uh, whose primary job was in the jail. Uh, they now rotate up here to the security kiosk, and I, I think that process has become quite fluid. Uh, we've had great success with moving jail deputies in and out of this position and giving them a break from the everyday duties and stress of the jail work. Uh, several that have, uh, held this position really enjoyed the opportunity and seem to be further motivated in, uh, working of the entire agency. In a way, it's brought insight to other areas of advancement for them within the sheriff's office. The detective division is a plainclothes division. It consists of eight sergeants, four deputies, two full-time civilian, uh, employees, and four part-time offender registration clerks. The division is currently fully staffed except for one part-time offender registration clerk, which I mentioned earlier. Uh, the following is a list of responsibilities for the division, which is felony arrest, uh, warrant service, uh, case investigations, crime analysis, drug enforcement, uh, forensic computer analysis, fugitive extradition, juvenile matters, offender registration, concealed carry permits, service support, applicant background investigations, just to name a few. Uh, detectives are also responsible for overseeing the Crime Stoppers of Reno County, hostage negotiations, and various additional duties. Uh, they receive cases by patrol, assigned to them by their captain for follow-up investigation based on the ability to create and continue leads until the case is solved or closed for lack of leads. Over the last year, a hundred and ninety-six cases were assigned to the division for follow-up. These cases resulted in twenty-five cases submitted for prosecution, thirty-one search warrants obtained, seventy-two cell phones were examined, and approximately forty-five thousand dollars of property were recovered for victims. Uh, two detectives have equipment that are now better to suit them in downloading cellular devices for investigative purposes. These are used in major drug, major cases such as, uh, child porn cases, solicitation of children cases, and several drug crimes. Uh, this greatly enhances our investigation division with a cer- uh, certificate in forensics to support and improve the agency's capabilities in collection of evidence from electronic devices to better prosecute and convict suspected violations of crimes. Over the last year, our juvenile detection has taken on the additional role of working with assigned, uh, tips by the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force out of Wichita, which is, uh, is ICAC. Uh, this has led to several investigations of juvenile sex crimes in our county. The registered offender office consists of four part-time civilians and two uniformed deputies. They oversee, update, and monitor currently over six hundred and forty-five offenders, uh, required by the courts to register for drug offense, sex offense, and violent offense within Reno County. Uh, they follow up and identify, uh, if these offenders remain within compliance of their court, uh, court-ordered identifier, and if offenders are identified as non-compliant, these two deputies will investigate and send up a case to the district attorney's office for prosecution. Over the last year, the offender registration office has submitted twenty cases to the district attorney's office for prosecution of non-compliant. Sorry about that. Uh, completed over a hundred and fifty spot checks on offenders and collected approximately forty thousand in registration fees. Uh, the Criminal Interdiction Unit, formerly called the D, DEU, is comprised of one detective sergeant, two patrolmen, and one criminal analyst. The main objective of the Criminal Addiction Unit is to investigate, investigation of individuals and organizations involved in narcotics trafficking, the seizure of assets acquired through narcotics trafficking, and the promotion of coordinated narcotics enforcement efforts among various law enforcement agencies, uh, within the county. During the last year, this unit completed thirteen search warrants. During the, the service of these search warrants, a total of twenty-four people were arrested on various drug crimes. The unit also seized sixty-one thousand eighty-five dollars in property from various drug operations in our county. This unit makes a valuable impact on drug crimes, uh, within our community. I want to take a minute to kind of talk about the, the new training facility and kind of give some updates on it. Uh, the project began in twenty twenty-one, uh, which has, you know, been over four years that we've, uh, taken to get into this process. And I know that, uh, uh, the landfill, uh, solid waste has really helped tremendously and helped build these burns. And over those four years when they're not doing their primary job, uh, we greatly appreciate that. We've also had, uh, public works that came out, and they helped to facilitate a few things, uh, that helped us be successful and, and move forward with that project as well. Um, the new facility, of course, uh, uh, once the shooting platform was completed, uh, we began, began using it in July of twenty twenty-four. Uh, as of today, the range is still under construction with the groundbreaking and the training building scheduled for, uh, June of twenty twenty-five. Since July, uh, July of twenty twenty-four, we've conducted several trainings. Uh, we've had seven full, basic, week-long training firearms, uh, training for firearms, uh, throughout there, uh, which, which takes a, a, a week. We usually use forty hours to, uh, educate and help people learn how to shoot and teach them the basics, going from, uh, iron sights to mini optics, which we swapped out, uh, last year. Uh, we've had twelve range dates, two SWAT trainings, one outside AC mini optic class, and a basic rifle, patrol rifle class. The facility also began to see, uh, used during annual SWAT training, where individuals from McPherson SWAT Team Butler, SWAT Team Harvey County were here at the facility in October twenty-four. We started to utilize the facility during the monthly Reno County SWATs, uh, SWAT trains, which, uh, we look forward to hosting more of these regional SWAT schools. Upcoming training, uh, which includes annual firearms, uh, which were currently underway this week, and, uh, the Reno County SWAT, uh, the facility to be utilized during upcoming trains to include, uh, night or low light calls, sniper qualifications, gas, munitions recertifications. Over the last year, we converted the agency into using handgun-mounted red dot sights, and as of April tenth, twenty twenty-five, the entire agency has been converted. Uh, converting to the new sighting system has improved the agency's qualifications to an average score of ninety-two percent, which is a four-point-nine percent, four-point-zero-nine percent increase for previous years. Eighty-four employees are currently issued duty handguns. I forgot to mention that, uh, with the Senator Moran grant, we also, uh, upgraded all our mobile radios, uh, which was paid for through a grant of, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, which updated our radios to, uh, allow us to remain compliant with, uh, federal requirements of running personal information over, over the radio. Uh, the FBI has put restrictions on FCC, uh, that we had to have certain encryption in order to operate as far as law enforcement, so. That, that helped us greatly, uh, that grant did. Uh, and finally, this week is National Police Week, and Friday, there will be a ceremony in front of the Law Enforcement Center at eleven hundred, and you're all invited. That's my update in a nutshell, and, uh, if you have any questions.
Yep. I do.
Yes, sir.
On the vehicle rotation, is that a resolution? That was passed or just something that was asked for you guys to do?
Just during the budget process, how many vehicles that are budgeted and approved?
All right.
Sure.
What's, I got one question.
Yes, sir.
And I, you've probably told us before on your rifle training, how, what's the distance that you can do out there?
So we basically take it up to a hundred yards. Out at the new range, we'll be going up to four hundred yards. In a rural environment, we don't know what's gonna happen or how long. Uh, in an urban environment, you're gonna, you're gonna see, I, I'm gonna say within twenty yards or closer, maybe a block. Um, usually you get a house as shield, but in a rural environment, you're gonna be, uh, at a pretty good distance. So we want to make sure that our patrolmen and, and detectives, anybody else interacting with, with the population is comfortable up to about three or four hundred yards.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Now we got our man that does the heavy lifting. Thanks, guys. Uh, next item on our agenda is our, our, uh, county administrators' reports.
Okay, I have in the packet is the monthly report with departments, um, Aging, Public Transit, Appraiser, Automotive, the Clerk, Community Corrections, Communications, District Attorney, Emergency Management, Facilities. Any questions you have on their monthly reports? Okay, other items I have, um, just kind of as I put in my weekly report that you received last week, budget sessions, budget work sessions, kind of wanted to see if you had a chance to look at your schedules, whether to schedule all the departments to come in and do their presentations or their explanation of their budget request, um, in the month of June. Either we meet every Wednesday in June and take a half-day, or after the two meetings on June eleventh, and two weeks after that, have study sessions following the meetings and try to get as many departments, get all the departments in during those two days. Kind of wanted to see what your schedules look like. Cause I'll start scheduling the departments when I know the dates that you guys are available.
And you're talking about every Wednesday in June?
Well, or you could do three. Uh, the other option would kind of as a hybrid. If June eleventh and the twenty-fifth are commission meeting days, but May the eleventh, eighteenth, and twenty-fifth would be dates that we could do some. Um, most departments are probably only gonna take five, ten minutes. A lot of the small departments, some of the larger departments, such as Public Works, Solid Waste, Sheriff, will probably take longer.
So you're saying we could do some of those in May?
Uh, I, I look in June.
Understand.
In June, I would look in June.
You wanted it all in June?
Yes. The county has to let the, the county clerk know by July twentieth of whether or not the budget's going to be above R and R revenue-neutral rate. And if it is, you have to have that maximum set at that time. So there's only one meeting in July before the July twentieth deadline. That's why I thought if we could meet in June and really talk about any cuts at that point or what the expectations of the county commission are with the requests from the departments.
If, I don't know how the rest of you guys are thinking about this, but, uh, for me, I think more days and earlier in the day, so we don't run into the later part of the day. Uh, it's gonna be harvest time and various things like that. Uh, I don't want to be messing around here in the middle of the day or all day. Maybe even the meeting times be earlier than normal so that, uh, we're in and out of here. Now, I don't know how you, you, the rest of you guys, I know Richard's working and Randy's working, what works better for you guys? More, more times earlier?
Be less disruptive for those of us that work probably if we just stay all day, but I know that's hard for you. I mean, just stay up for a meeting and get them all done in a couple of meetings.
I'll do what I need to do. I, I stated my preference, but I'll, I'll do what I need to do.
But June's not a bad month for me, so.
The courthouse opens at seven AM, so I mean, anytime between seven AM and five PM here at the, the courthouse could be, we could have sessions. So any of those days, so it's really, I think departments will work around with what you guys said is when you'll be here.
Well, if we got our choice and we're gonna do full days, what part of the month do you think? First, first week? First, you know, last week?
I would say between the eleventh and twenty-fifth. I, the second through, second, third, and fourth weeks, just because there's still some updates, some changes where my staff is working on to make sure it's all prepared for a book for you guys to review, so.
You've gotta have time to get certain information where you can pass.
So I, I would say, and you don't even have to do them on Wednesdays, between June ninth and June twenty-seventh would be the best. Those are, that's Monday through Friday, the whole week, month.
What last week in June?
It's not raining again, so yes.
It won't, it won't rain until
Still the day you start cutting.
You'll get about half a day and then it rains. But yeah, however it works for you guys, I'm fine with it. I'll just.
Would you get it done in three mornings, you think?
I think so, yes.
If you start it early?
Yes, since we're not doing the partner agencies, it's just the, the county departments, I think we can do it in three mornings, if you wanted to do it that way.
And we won't know until the sixteenth, will we?
Estimated valuation? We may have that a little early, um, but having it actually in the state budget form takes a little bit of time also. But we should have that by the second week of, the end of the second week of June, I think we probably will have a decent idea.
That's what I was thinking of. If we got a decent idea of what the, what will, uh, have the armed value of, of real estate values, uh, that would help a little bit.
Right, because just entering the numbers with a flat assessed valuation and no changes to cash, right now, it would be about eight and a half million dollars to have a flat mill levy. That would have to be cut. That's not cut, but that's adjustments to the budget. We know valuation has gone up. I think it's, it's going up, so that'll take some of it, and there's some cash still to work with. But there are cuts that will have to be made and adjustments to the budget. So it'd be good at that point if, when we're, when you guys are talking with departments to, if there's going to be drastic changes to their budgets, to talk with them at that time instead of talking with them, and then in August saying, well, we'll go back and look and cut another two hundred thousand from this department.
That's why I was thinking maybe that last week in June would be, we might, we might have a little more knowledge to go on.
Yeah, what, whatever we need to work, I, I'm, I'm good.
Okay.
I'll just.
If you guys could email me, um, any days that definitely don't work or mornings, or at, any mornings in June that do not work, and then I'll, I'll talk with Commissioner Vincent, since he's not able to be here today, just to see his schedule also.
I'm getting a knee replaced after the eleventh, uh, the twelfth actually. But they get you start, I mean, I, I'll start rehab, physical therapy, and, I mean, we have a ramp, so I can get in here, so.
Okay.
I might have to stretch my leg out, but, but I can be here.
Okay.
Or you could stay home like Commissioner Hurst and eat sandwiches while we're talking to him. On the, on the screen. Well, at least that's what Daniel, at least that's what Daniel said when he was here.
One has to look after one's nutrition.
If you're gonna heal properly, huh? No, whatever you kind of need to do. I'll make sure that I don't have anything in that week there that, that, uh,
I'll get a tentative schedule before the next meeting.
That just might get canceled too.
Okay. The other item I just wanted to kind of bring up for consideration is a, at the end of maybe a study session, next commission meeting, so you guys meet on the twenty-eighth, having a study session following that to talk about the resolution that establishes burn permits. Cause over the past, well, few months, you've, you've all had some complaints, but I thought you could sit down with Adam and Travis, Patrick myself, and really explain what the resolution is, how we do it, and then if you guys really want to make some changes or what modifications, have that in a study session and any recommendations can then be brought back at a future commission meeting. So I just kind of wanted to bring that, bring that up if that works for you guys to have a study session after the twenty-eighth meeting.
Sound reasonable there, everybody?
Yep, a good idea.
Yep.
Something needs to be done.
That's all I have.
Or at least looked into. I don't say has to be done, but looked into. Uh, so, any further comments? Patrick, you got anything you need to make us aware of?
I don't have anything for this meeting. We're gonna stay after the agenda and then discuss this, uh, uh, agreement with Meadowlark and go over that.
Okay.
Hey, Patrick, here's one that'll make you shudder. I had breakfast with somebody from McPherson County. I was telling these guys last night that they did a similar burn process like we did before we had the permitting and stuff. And, but they have a step that they can take that allows the commissioner to overrule and sign off. I said, no, thank you. That'd make you not sleep at night, wouldn't it?
Yeah, go do what you want to, and you have no control over it, and you're, you're responsible. No, thank you. No, thank you. So, well, with that, we do have a study session coming up. So I'd say unless somebody has something.
Do you want?
Yeah, county commission, uh, reports. I don't know where we started last week. I thought we started with Richard.
You start Ron.
Yeah, well, he's, he has nothing to say today.
I don't either.
Brandon? So you're not going to comment?
I'm sure he'll cover what I'm going to say. Go ahead.
Just a few phone calls, but nothing pressing.
Ron, you?
Yeah, I normally do, but this Thursday, or Thursday, the 22nd next week is the 20th anniversary of the K96 Corridor Development Association. And there'll be an 11:30 lunch. And Lieutenant Governor David Tolan will be the featured speaker. He'll talk about his things and really it's a recognition too of the original person who was responsible to get things started with K96 and the coalition of the four communities and the two counties. And it'll be held at the National Center for Aviation Training there at 4004 North Webb Road. And we'd really like to have as many people representing from commissions and so forth and, and elected personnel there to, to listen to, to Governor, Lieutenant Governor Tolan. And I'd really like to know sometime today, if possible, or at least by tomorrow, if you would be attending. And so need to call this number or this email. That's Kayleen Hogue at K-H-A-U-G-3@gmail.com. And so it's going to be a pretty, pretty nice event down there with, and fortunately she was able to get Lieutenant Governor to, to come and present. Also, I want to say appreciation to Michael Hinton from AgTrax. On, he's really nationally known for antique tractor preservation. And they're going to have a special day on August 22nd. Maybe you've got that in Hutchinson. And he's been working with the Kansas Legislature as well as the US Postal Service to get the recognition for the antique tractor groups. And so he's really done a good marketing program for Hutchinson and Kansas with regard to that. So thanks, Michael. Pretty Prairie Rodeo is Friday and Saturday.
At Abbeville.
At Abbeville. And also, I think there's another event coming up about two weeks after that, if I remember right. Wasn't that the 31st? There's going to be a ranch rodeo out here west of Partridge. And it's going to be on the 31st with live music and all kinds of events that go along with the ranch rodeo, which that's really been increasing in popularity. There'll be a number of teams there and a pretty big day planned on that. So if you've got any questions, I think there's a lady here that her husband is kind of in charge of doing that. And you've got any comments you would you like to make with regard to that?
Well, it, it is a full day, so I mean, we have team roping in the morning.
Come up here, because I have some like that locally. I think that's a big deal.
So it's our first big event. It's actually our own arena and it's west of Partridge. And it's May 31st. We have a team roping that morning at 11:00 AM. And then the ranch rodeo, like Ron was saying, we'll have, well, we're almost full. We're taking a maximum of 15 teams. It's a four-person team. So it starts at 5:00 PM and we'll have food vendors and we have a live band afterwards. And it's $10 to watch the road rodeo and the live band and anybody's welcome, any ages. Kids 12 and under are free. So it's going to be a, a fun, fun day. Hopefully the weather cooperates with us. So we're, we're looking forward to it so we can maybe host some more things, some more events.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's all I have.
Commissioners, I thought of something. Last Friday, a couple of commissioners and I were at the groundbreaking for the Apex Shears building. And that was really nice and congratulate them on their new building. And the county was really happy to be part of the IRB financing for that, so that was a good thing.
It's very well received and I, the company appreciated the work of everybody that was involved in helping keeping that company headquarters here in, in Reno County. So if you drive by, he says they're going to be pouring concrete shortly. So anyway, I don't have much else to say other than, like Patrick said, that bring that to the attention that, that's moving, that particular item is moving forward. So with that, if there's nothing else, now I can adjourn, can I? There you go. We'll adjourn and we'll meet right back here in, what, five minutes and, and start our, our study session? Is that all right with everybody? Meeting adjourned.